Township Board of Education meeting, today is February 26th. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance
to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Ali.
Here.
Mr. Carter.
Here.
Ms. James.
Here.
Ms. Keith.
Here.
Mr. Legori.
Here.
Dr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Singh.
Here.
Ms. Toth.
Here.
And Mr. Wen.
Here.
We have four.
Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law, the public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location, was distributed by 3:00 PM Tuesday, November 26, 2024, and Wednesday, November 27, 2024, in the following manner. Posted on the bulletin board, reserved for announcements in the Board Office, 25 Linwood Place, North Brunswick, mailed to the Home News Tribune, Star Ledger, NJ.com, and the Clerk of the Township of North Brunswick, and delivered to the nine duly-elected Board members. Good evening, everyone. Hope everyone is doing well. It is February. We are nearing the end of February, so March is right around the corner. Spring is around the corner. I personally didn't wear a jacket tonight, which was kind of nice. Um, we've had a cold winter, so definitely looking forward to the warmth of spring. And um, you'll notice that I have a new, not so new face. Uh, to my left, we have Mrs. Amy Kida filling in for Mrs. Janet Chiroka tonight, our Superintendent. Superintendent Chiroka went through uh, some surgery on her eye. Everything is okay, um, and she is in recovery mode right now. She will be back to us very soon. We wish her well. We've been checking in on her, and I know that she's probably watching and listening in tonight. So, thank you for filling in and being here, and I'll also turn it over to you because our one presentation tonight is our annual Violence and Vandalism Report, Reporting Period One for our district, and uh, we will get started then. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Happy to be here tonight and sitting in this chair. Well, as we do twice a year, um, this is our required annual um, reporting period one, which covers July 1st of 2024 through December 31st, uh, 2004. And the information can be found on our Board Agenda, pages 12 through 14, but I also did have a presentation packet for the Board in front of them tonight, um, that also highlights this information. So, as required, um, we do compare uh, numbers of incidents, uh, HIB alleged, training programs, from one reporting period to the previous exact reporting period. Again, that is because of the timeframe. Our numbers typically are lower in Reporting Period One because July and August, um, we're really not here. Um, our students are, you know, just a few in summer programs. So really, these numbers are reflective from the beginning of the school year, um, through winter break. As you can see from the incidents, which the state lists um, and labels as violence, vandalism, substance, weapons, and harassment, intimidation, bullying, or HIB confirmed, notice that our numbers did slightly go down uh, from this time last year, which we're really proud of, and we hope to continue to see that number um, go down as well. Really, what I'd like to highlight for the Board this evening is the other incidents leading to removal. That's uh, what the state considers classified as tardy, cutting class, insubordination, disruptive behavior, academic integrity. You can see, we went down by 94 incidents of that nature from this time last year, which is really, really impressive. That is the biggest drop that we've seen um, in the past several years. Um, we do attribute that a lot to our Attendance Matters initiatives in all of our schools. Also, we attribute it to, at the middle school, we do have the yonder pouchers, so the cellphones are not being used during the school day at the middle school. And also, at the high school, there's been limitations placed on cellphone use during the school day. Um, also, I'm proud to report again, I know that we, um, as a Board, see the monthly HIB reports. We, this is the second year in a row so far, I don't know if there's real wood here. We have not had any HIBs at the elementary schools. And again, we do, you know, attribute to, we are getting out there, doing more trainings, more programs with our staff, our administrators, our students. But also, we are still seeing, and although COVID is almost at the five-year mark, which is crazy, we are still seeing, we're seeing that transition out of those COVID years. Our elementary students right now have pretty much been in regular school, regular routines, interactions with each other. So we are starting to see that kind of phase out, where our numbers for HIB or incidents are anywhere from sixth grade to around 11th grade or so. And we, we started to see that trend, they're kind of trending out, and we hope that trend continues, you know, on that right path. We're really proud of these, you know, these numbers, that we see them going down. Um, HIB alleged simply means that there were forms submitted and that they proceeded, but that they were unfounded, and we did see a drop in that as well. Um, HIB trainings, again, every year, we try to increase the number of trainings. That doesn't necessarily mean the trainings that we give to our staff, but also that staff and administrators take on their own as well. Um, and in your packets for the Board, although the state only requires us to say who attends training, or who has been trained, um, you will see um, a nice chart that I have that lists some of the trainings. Um, they range from anywhere, again, like I said, for our in-school trainings of staff, but also trainings that take place out of district. The New Jersey Law Center um, offers a lot, Legal One, um, and again, PBSIS enrollment sessions for training, or just other things that are included, um, besides the annual HIB trainings that take place throughout uh, the school year. Um, HIB programs, they are also listed for you in detail, um, starting on page 13 and going on page 14. We, there's a slight drop in that, and that's, I will explain. The New Jersey Department of Education also requires us to have an anti-bullying specialist in preschool. Yes, preschool. Um, and, you know, we were having our HIB specialist, Mrs. Egan, do a lot of programs, and unfortunately, though, a lot of the programs we feel are fit for preschool are not technically labeled as HIB. Um, you know, we do not have any HIBs in our preschools, and hopefully, we don't. So, I actually asked, we discussed scaling that back a little bit in Reporting Period One, and doing more of those types of programs this time of year, because now they're going to be going into kindergarten. So, you'll see that number change and increase, actually, for Reporting Period Two when I report out in the summer. Again, I have listed for you here of the HIB submitted claims, because as you can see, the HIB confirmed, um, it doesn't separate that number out. So I have done that for you. Of the HIB submitted claims in reported Period One, 20 of them were founded. And again, you can see the 15 listed here, there were also 15 that were unfounded. As a reminder, under the New Jersey Department of Education HIB Amendment of 2022-23, HIB claims are reviewed to determine if an investigation should or should not proceed. Eleven submitted claims in reported Period One were preliminarily determined as not proceeding. That does not mean that these claims were fruitless or anything like that. What it means is that the administration can see on its surface, this was conflict. This did not meet the parameters by state law, um, as defined by HIB. But they were dealt with according to code of conduct, if there were violations there. It just doesn't mean that they met the requirements as an HIB investigation to be launched. We continue supports for both the offenders and victims through our anti-bullying specialists in the schools, and particularly our school counselors. Again, you can see, you know, through the different uh, programs that we have throughout the year, but also, um, important that I just want to take a moment to highlight is, although the state does not consider it HIB training, our staff do participate in a lot of student behavior-related trainings outside and inside the district. Whether it's on conflict resolution, mental health, um, just looking at relationships, classroom management, and a lot of these that you can see in your packet that I listed for you, um, are actually ones that our staff put on for other staff, our own in-house PD, which is great, we get to turnkey that inside. Our MTSS approach with multi-tiered support systems for social-emotional learning, um, teen suicide prevention, our school threat assessment teams and their training, and the impact of social media in schools. So, there is a lot going on outside of the scope of what the state considers, um, just simple HIB training by their definition. So that is my report for Reporting Period One. I'm happy to take any questions from the Board? Okay, great. Um, I would just also like to share that, and for our viewing audience, um, that we do have designated page on our website at MBTSchools.org for anti-bullying info. There is the link to any forms, um, to report any suspicion or claims of bullying, um, whether you want to report them anonymously or as a parent, um, those forms are readily available, along with FAQs about our bully, anti-bullying programs and policies in the district. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mrs. Kida, and thank you for all of your hard work with this and, you know, putting together this presentation uh, for us multiple times a year, obviously. Um, you know, we know that um, you take great pride in this, and to see, you know, 90-plus had gone down in that one section was remarkable. It's something that, you know, the district should be proud of, um, and, you know, you should be proud of the work that's going into that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else have anything that they'd like to mention? Questions? All right, pretty straightforward. We can uh, move on to the remaining of our meeting. Mr. Carter, would you please take item six, our meeting minutes?
Sure thing, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to approve the following Board Minutes. Conference meeting minutes, uh, January 15th, 2025. Executive meeting minutes, January 15th, 2025. Regular public meeting minutes, January 29th, 2025. Executive meeting minutes, January 29th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? We've accepted all the meeting minutes.
Thank you. Are there any communications this evening?
No, Madam President.
Thank you. All right, moving on to reports, I'm assuming we can just jump over to the administrative report, which Mrs. Kida will be giving.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm reading this administrative report on behalf of Mrs. Chiroka this evening. Uh, good evening to all our families, guests, viewers, uh, here tonight. Mrs. Chiroka sends her regrets for this evening, um, as uh, Mrs. Toth mentioned earlier, she's unable to be here tonight due to eye surgery that she had on Monday. Um, she is recovering nicely and expects to be back in district in a few days. However, she did prepare the following administrative report that I'm about to give. As a reminder, North Brunswick Township School District is excited to announce that it has the unique opportunity to present a bond referendum to the North Brunswick Township residents to invest in much-needed infrastructure in our schools at zero, zero cost to the taxpayer. These projects are also eligible for 40% facilities funding by the New Jersey Department of Education. The MBT Schools Bond Referendum will take place on March 11th, 2025, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM. It includes $63.79 million in improvements to our district schools, again, with zero tax increase to our taxpayers. The ballot will have two questions. Please know that question two cannot pass without question one passing. The first question will be for $52.5 million and focuses on vital HVAC heating and cooling work in all of our buildings except MBTMS, building envelope repairs to the brickwork at both MBTHS and Linwood to keep our buildings safe, and on the upgrade of bathrooms to ensure that they are ADA or handicap compliant, which they currently are not. Question two is for $11.2 million and again, can only pass if question one passes. Question two focuses on replacing outdated windows and doors and locks throughout our facilities, improving security, energy efficiency, and most importantly, safety. Just as in any election, voters can vote by mail or in person, polls will be open again from 2:00 PM to 8:00 PM on March 11th, 2025. Mail-in ballot applications and voting information is available on the Middlesex County website. More information, including project details, FAQs, informational presentations, and videos, can be found on our district website at MBTSchools.org. As a reminder, we have several early closings in March. Thursday, March 20th and Friday, March 21st will be early dismissal days for our parent-teacher conferences. Friday, March 28th will now be an early dismissal day for staff professional learning that was canceled in early February due to a delayed opening with weather. Additionally, schools will be closed on Monday, March 31st for the Eid holiday. And that concludes my administrative report this evening, Madam President.
Thank you. At this time, we will move to our student reports. Ms. Montero and Ms. Keith, thank you for joining us again.
Hi. So first, on Friday, January 31st, SGO sponsored the annual talent show. We had 13 acts, and it was really amazing to see, one of the first performers was actually the winner, and it was a duet. A guy came out, started singing, he had a band behind him playing, and then a girl actually came out after and started singing with him, and there was flashlights on, and it was just really amazing to watch. Um, next up, many of our clubs participated in the Martin Luther King Jr. and Black History Month Assembly on February 12th, and our BCA Club Band Choir all contributed to the amazing event. And then last week, we had a STEM night, and the Science National Honor Society, like, hosted this, and it basically showcased everything that our STEM Academy at the high school has, so 3D printing, um, laser cutting, all the things that we showcased, and got this talk to underclassmen, upcoming high schoolers about all that.
And then we also had somebody who went on Shark Tank come in and show us the projects he made fresh out of college, and he kind of talked to all the STEM kids about like, what he does and how, like, even if you're in the STEM world, you can go into business and all these other things, like, you're not constructed to one thing. Um, and then Thursday, February 13th, the Class of 2027 and Class of 2028 co-sponsored a very successful movie night event in the Commons in MBTHS. They played 50 First Dates, and students showed up in pajamas with their blankets, and everyone just had a good time watching the movie. This past Friday, February 21st, BCA hosted a very successful BCA night in celebration of Black History Month. The event is always very fun, very lively, it's a great show of the culture, and all of the participants and people coming to watch always have a really good time. And this coming Friday evening, MBTHS hosting our annual Rockathon. This is the 40th year that this event will take place, and this year, students will be raising money for Hugs for Brady, the North Brunswick Food Bank, and the SGO charity, which is Raiders' Home Plate. And basically, students sit in the Commons for 24 hours in rocking chairs, they get a couple breaks, but they start Friday after school till Saturday afternoon, and you only get like, three hours of sleep.
We get a sleeping period where people really don't sleep. It's like quiet time, the light's just on, but they're just dimmed a little bit, and you get a sleeping period from 3:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
Yep. Otherwise, you're in that rocking chair. Oh, it's great. And that's all, thank you.
Wow. Wow. I hope that goes well. I can't wait to hear about that next month, so please.
Some great bonding moments.
Yeah, I'm sure. Very good. Glad you guys are having a great time, sounds like it. All right, we'll move to our committee reports. This evening, we'll start with Mr. Ali, Education. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, Madam President. So, the Education Committee met on February 19th, and we have two items that were discussed in tonight's agenda, and a few other district-wide updates that I'll be reporting tonight. So in terms of the statewide budget, the Department of Education informed all school districts around the state that we will not exceed 3% cuts for the 2025, 2026 school year. Quick update about the referendum, as Ms. Kida mentioned earlier, we're still, the referendum voting phases will be Tuesday, March 11th, from 2:00 to 8:00 PM, and there has been a few updates on our website to provide more clarity and address some questions that have been coming from the community, so you could check our FAQs. And the areas of grants and assessments, the committee received updates from Marcy Chang, and we are, um, we are going to be, well, we, we have some, some updates about our morning math and our Project Achieve programs, which are ongoing academic support for elementary school students, and this is in addition to our ongoing Title I tutoring at the Linwood and the middle school. The New Jersey Graduation GPA Efficiency Assessment will be taking place on March 10th and 11th for 11th grade students, and that is our graduation proficiency exam. We have finished our High Impact Tutoring Grant Period, and we serve 40 elementary school students and several other high school students with this funding. There is overall positive feedback from the staff and teachers, so we hope the state has more initiatives like this. Additionally, we have been notified that a high school has been released from its targeted support and improvement plan, so that status will be dropped from our, our school designation on June 30th. We have also made amendments to our Elementary and Secondary Education Act grant funding and our Individual Disabilities Education Act funding. So whenever there's changes that have, that have been made to this, we have to report it out, and these changes really were just made to better meet the needs of our students, and that's all for assessments and grants. And in the area of curriculum and technology, the committee reported updates from Dr. Johnson, and students this month will be taking to um, the State House in Trenton on Thursday, March 27th for a New Jersey STEM showcase, and many students from our district will be showcasing their work around state to others, so that's going to be very exciting for them. And we are also integrating the Abbot Charles Bowles Environmental Science Curriculum into our environmental programs at the high school. We are potentially reducing the number of dual-language classes in our elementary classrooms, which will result in varying class sizes. However, all of the class sizes will meet the state requirements. And the area of pupil and personnel services, we received updates from Chris Harry, and we only have one update from this committee, and we have met the requirements for our state targeted review pertaining to indicators for A and for B, which uh, touch on discipline rates and disparities remaining to student demographics. So we are no longer under review for that, which is great to know. And for the one policy we review, this is for the second reading, for Policy 5460, and this is just to introduce the new graduation requirements for the school year 26 and 27 graduates, and this is pertaining to the FAFSA form that families will need to fill out, that's state mandated. And lastly, on March 28th, we will have a half-day for students. This will be a makeup profession vellum day from one of the delayed openings we had from the snow. And that's all from our Education Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Ali. Next, we have Dr. Patel, Human Resources.
Thanks, thanks, Madam President. The Human Resources Committee, Relations Committee, met on Wednesday, February 19th to discuss various personnel topics. For those on tonight's agenda who are retiring or resigning, the Board thanks them for their service and wishes them well. There are new staff and many new substitute staff on tonight's agenda. We welcome all those new members to our district, and we look forward to having you work with us here in North Brunswick. As of our committee meeting, any remaining or new vacancies for the 2024-2025 school year continue to be posted and can be found on our district website, social media pages, and posted in each of our buildings. We discuss these vacancies along with the upcoming leaves of absences, and how those positions may be filled via daily subs, long-term subs, or sixth teaching period. There are a few reassignments on tonight's agenda, and we thank our staff for taking on these new assignments. Ms. Kida shared that she's working with our administrators on attending at least five virtual job fairs coming up this winter and spring, one of which was less Thursday, February 20th. Current remaining vacancies were posted for potential candidates to consider. For any teaching positions, alternate route, and traditional route candidates are both encouraged to apply. The committee had their second and final reading of revised policies and regulations, all related to the Uniform State Memorandum of Agreement for Education and Law Enforcement Officials. These include 5512 harassment, intimidation, bullying, 7441 electronic surveillance in school buildings and on school grounds, and 9320 cooperation with law enforcement agencies. Additionally, we had our first reading of Policy 9163 on spectator code of conduct for interestalastic events. Lastly, Ms. Kida, she reviewed the districts required by Annual Violence and Vandalism Report for the reporting period of July 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024. The report can also be found on tonight's agenda, and Ms. Kida will be presenting that information at our February Board Meeting, which she did. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, that could be found on pages 12 through 14. Uh, at this time, Mr. Carter, Business Operations.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the Business Operations Committee also met on February 19th. On the agenda this evening, you'll find the following items. Change order for additional work related to the Linwood Chiller in Finance Section 3F, a motion to approve the contract to purchase three-floor scrubbers to be used at Judd Linwood in the high school in Finance Section 3G, and a second and final reading of Policy 8500 and Policy Section 1B of tonight's agenda. Finally, we received status updates on Linwood Chiller, fire updates still scheduled for April, middle school leak forensics, we're waiting on final estimate, John Adams divider has been installed in the gym, Livingston Park paving and traffic flow bid date of 4:9 estimated, ECC courtyard drainage repair scheduled for the spring, and district-wide HVAC control upgrades are ongoing, as is lead water testing.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Ms. Keith, anything for negotiations this evening?
None at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. And Mr. Legori, our liaison for New Jersey School Boards, as well as the Township Mayor and Council?
Madam President, thank you. There was a Middlesex County School Boards Association meeting on February 6th. I'm happy to report that four of the nine duly-elected Board members attended that meeting online. After a quick Board of Directors update, we heard from our School Board Association Field Services Team, and our friend Mary Ann Friedman reported out on a couple of items, uh, including that the superintendent evaluation timeframe is approaching, uh, that the deadline for uh, new member orientation is approaching, that that needed to be done within 90 days, uh, and one piece of legislation that she brought up that recently passed was that for Board members who are running this year, or members of the public who wish to run this year, uh, that your petitions have gone up from 10 signatures to 25 signatures now. We then had a spirited conversation with State Senator Vin Gopal from Monmouth County, who is the State Senate Education Committee Chair. We've heard from him last year as well, so it's always a great conversation with Senator Gopal. Among the items we discussed, uh, the ongoing SFRA issue, and whether there will be changes to SFRA. He has his ideas, the governor has his ideas, they still haven't come together just yet. We discussed some reforms in charter school hearings, including how their Board members are selected, which was fascinating. He is also considering legislation on mandating consolidation, uh, but nothing yet on that from Senator Gopal. That was about it, and just a quick update from uh, my liaison to the mayor and council. Just wanted to say a quick thank you to Mayor Womack, the members of the council, especially Council President Guadagnino, uh, for supporting our referendum initiatives. We've seen stuff both online and at their meetings, so we thank them for that as well. That would conclude the report, thank you.
Definitely. Thank you, Mr. Legori. I think that wraps up our reports for the evening, so at this time, Mr. Wen, would you please take item nine?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve the administrative student and committee reports.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? All the reports are accepted.
Thank you. At this time, we will review our agenda for our February 26th meeting. As always, the Board receives the agenda in advance. We have ample time to review the agenda. Anything that is different, um, from our first receiving of the agenda is in bold, so we will start our review on pages two and three. Pages four and five. Six and seven. Eight and nine. Ten and 11. Twelve and 13. Pages 14 and 15. 16 and 17. Wrapping up on page 18 this evening. Can jump back to page two. At this time, we will do a public session on agenda items only. If there's anyone from the public that would like to come up and speak on anything listed on our agenda, we just ask that you uh, come up, state your name, and you'll be given three minutes. Seeing none, can I please have a motion to close this public portion of the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Keith, would you please take item 13?
Yes, Madam President. I would like to make a motion to approve the following consent agenda items, personnel, curriculum, miscellaneous, finance items one through three, policy and transportation.
Second.
I'm gonna take roll call now? Uh, Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keith?
Yes.
Mr. Legori?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
All the motions and resolutions are through and passed.
Thank you, Ms. Hop. All right. We could jump to page 17, item number 14 on our agenda. At this time, we will have a public session on any matter. If anyone from the public would like to come up to the podium and speak on any matter, this is the time, we just ask that you state your name, and you'll be given three minutes. Good evening, Ms. Pazner.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening to the North Brunswick Township Board of Education and the North Brunswick community at large. My name is Beth Pazner, I'm the president of the North Brunswick Township Education Association. We are the union that represents the teachers and support staff of North Brunswick Township Schools. I'm here tonight to speak in support of the upcoming referendum, and to speak on why the time to vote yes is now. Everyone keeps saying that North Brunswick has this unique opportunity with this bond referendum, and I want to explain exactly why that is. This bond referendum comes with a zero tax increase at this time, but how is that possible? And I'm gonna explain why. Our school district has been making payments on prior debt that is now maturing. Voters now have the opportunity to allow funding allocated to mature bonds to be reinvested in the new and badly needed work. The school district has been approved- The school district has been approved for significant state aid to offset the cost of these improvements. The combination of these two circumstances makes it possible for there to be no increase to the North Brunswick taxpayers for this referendum. The bonds will be issued on a tax-exempt basis, which means that interest on the bonds is exempt from federal and state income taxes, keeping the interest rate lower than rates that an individual could receive for other debts such as a home loan. The actual rate will be set at a competitive bond sale after the bonds are approved by the voters. If the rates go lower, North Brunswick would have the opportunity to refinance them at lower rates later. There is no guarantee that rates will be lower if we delay the bond sale. Also, if we wait for another time, there's no guarantee that this will be a zero tax increase for the taxpayer. The cost of goods and labor could inflate, and will definitely inflate, and forty percent state aid might not be available. And you may be wondering whether there's a way for us to pay for this without going through the process of a bond referendum, and ultimately, the answer is no. While, of course, North Brunswick schools have capital and maintenance reserves that help pay for improvement projects, we do not have the money to finance such significant projects in the time needed in order for the work to actually occur. We have expensive work that is needed, particularly to our HVAC systems in all of our schools, except for every DMS, of course. And without a bond referendum, we'd have to spread these projects out over a significant number of years. We cannot wait years to fix these problems, and we would not receive state aid for these projects. There's a chance that we would have emergency repairs, and we'd be on the hook a hundred percent for the cost of those repairs. I want the community to think about their own HVAC units in their own homes. Would you rather replace your twenty-year-old unit now, have forty percent of it paid for by someone else, and have time to secure the best company and best price? Or, you know, would you rather, you know, wait for it to break, have to pay a hundred percent out of your own pocket for it, scramble to find a company that probably would not give you such a good deal, while meanwhile, your house is freezing? To me, it's a no-brainer. And so, you know, we cannot wait years to fix these problems. They need to be addressed as soon as possible. A bond referendum is the only way to do that. And once again, we do have staff members here, as much as you love hearing me every month, right? We have staff members here that have come to speak, you know, tonight about the issues in their schools and in their classrooms. And I encourage the community to listen to them, vote yes to questions one and two for the referendum. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Assistant Superintendent Kita and the rest of the board of ed. It's good to see everybody. My name is Maria Russo, and I am here tonight both as a staff member of North Brunswick Schools and a longtime resident of North Brunswick. I am thankful to have this opportunity to express my support in favor of the referendum that will be brought before the members of the township for consideration on Tuesday, March eleventh. I've been a teacher in North Brunswick for over thirty years and a homeowner in North Brunswick for over twenty years. I've seen the school buildings of North Brunswick over these past thirty years go through many stages of updates and changes. I worked for years at Livingston Park before all the doors had to be locked every second of the day. You would find a door that maybe wasn't locked all the time, and that was okay back when. There was no air conditioning in the elementary school buildings, and kids would readily have worksheets stuck to their arms because they were sweaty. And there were windows open, and we could hear traffic, and there might be a big industrial-sized fan that was blowing everything, and we managed. But when the school was finally air-conditioned, and the kids stopped sneezing, and they could think, and we could all stop sweating all over each other, it was a huge improvement to their comfort and the improvement of their learning environment. It was phenomenal. And their education just improved tremendously. So now we're at another juncture, twenty, twenty-five years later. The buildings have gotten older, and updates are once again in need. The heating systems, the windows, door locks, brickwork, and restrooms in many of our buildings. I have no reservations that a yes vote for both questions of this referendum is what is best for the town of North Brunswick, not just our students, not just the teachers, but for the entire town. I currently teach fifth grade math in a classroom at Linwood School on the other side of this brand-new facility, or this newly renovated facility, I should say. A few years ago, I inherited a few of my father's possessions when he passed away, and the possession that I use the most often in my classroom is a letter opener, this metal letter opener that was on his desk, and I use this every day in my classroom to turn the heating unit on and off, because the toggle switch for this heating unit is behind this grate that my hands can't reach. So every day, I have to use this letter opener to turn it on and off, and I tell the kids, like, please don't do this, because it's akin to shoving a fork in a toaster, like, you just don't do that. So I tell them, don't ever do this at home, but I have to do this in my classroom, because no matter how much I ask Frank to adjust the heat, he can't adjust it properly. And my room is either ridiculously hot or cold. So I can't leave it on, and I can't turn it off. The really strange days are when it's on all day, and we're still cold, because usually it's on and we're super hot, or it's off and we're cold. So I toggle it on and off all day long. Every once in a while, there's a weird day, and it's on and we're still cold. So then I don't know what to do. It's also very loud, so while I never worry that the kids can hear me, obviously, I do sometimes have trouble hearing the children, and I know that a lot of times, the children can't hear each other. And at a time when it is very important for the kids to be able to share their ideas with one another, I'm constantly asking them, can you repeat yourself? Did you hear him? Did you hear her? Can you please say that again? So a lot of times, I will take that letter opener and run over to the heating unit and turn it off, and be like, we're going to talk again now. Can you repeat yourself now that the heating unit is quieter, and we can now talk? So, and to put this clearly, this, I mean, I consider myself lucky, because my heating unit works. So that's, this is all minor, more of like a nuisance than anything, because in my hallway, just within the past couple of months, there have been other classrooms where the heating unit is making scraping noises. There's the smell of like acrid burning metal coming out of these heating units, where they need to be turned off, and classes in the morning are just grabbing up their things and moving to the cafeteria. So with all of this to consider, again, I do consider myself lucky, I haven't been put in that position, but it's clear that something needs to be done, and it needs to be done now. And since, like Ms. Pasner said, like we've all said, this can be done without an increase to my taxes or any of the taxes of our residents, it's time to do this now, before we are paying for this out of pocket. So I'm here tonight to speak to all of us, to our community, to strongly encourage everybody to vote yes to questions one and two on Tuesday, March eleventh. Maintaining our schools means maintaining our property values. And since passing this referendum will allow our buildings to be fixed with a zero tax increase, the choice is clear. The citizens of North Brunswick need to vote yes and give the children of North Brunswick the safe, healthy, and comfortable learning environments that they need and that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Hello? Are we on? Come on out.
I didn't touch it.
I teach music production. I'll give you a light. Good evening, everyone. How are you? My name is Cooper Ford. I am a teacher in the high school, music teacher. I have been there since 2015. I am also a parent, a resident of the community, and have played Maria, you know, seen a lot of things with the schools. I'm going to speak tonight about the HVAC, as well as about the referendum. The music wing is similar to other parts of the school, has had its challenges. We have had a low since January of forty-three degrees up to ninety-one degrees. Some days will have a swing of about forty degrees within the same day from one to the other. Part of the reason is because, basically, our heating system has only two settings right now. It's either sno-miser, or it's heat-miser, right? So it's either on and off, and in order to switch one way or the other, we need to send one of our maintenance guys up on the roof to adjust it manually. And that's how it's done. So I don't ask when it's raining or anything like that, because that's just really rude. But that's the situation. And I do give props, you know, to the board and to our central administration, because in the last two months, which many of you know, you know, there's been emergency work, there's been bending over backwards to try to get this stuff fixed. But it does make it very difficult to teach music classes, or any classes, when, you know, you're trying to move fingers for those violins, and, you know, the fingers are frozen, or there's sweat, sweats pouring down as we're trying to make things happen. The auditorium, which is next door, has also had its challenges. It is our premier public space, and January, we almost could not use it. Judd had to relocate their play to the middle school. We almost had to cancel and reschedule two of their concerts. And, you know, that's no way to be. We, you know, can you imagine, the old drama tonight is practicing for their musical this weekend. Can you imagine if something happened to the HVAC, and they had to cancel it because it all went down? And so I, it is challenging, which is why I'm glad this referendum is happening. It's why, because people asked, and they said, they asked, how are things going? And I said, well, you know, it's kind of hard at that. And they said, well, what's, you know, what's the board doing? They should do something. I said, yes, they are doing something. They're doing something good. They're being smart about it, because, you know, paying emergency fees and things like that to fix is not very smart. It's expensive. Trying to rush parts in from, you know, whatever parts of China in hopes it shows up on the ship, or from Georgia, or Texas, or I don't even know where our last part came from, or... But, you know, that's the bend, which many of you know, the bending over backwards that's had to happen. This referendum is smart, right? It's not a car. We're at the point with the car, it's not worth fixing anymore. Let's get the new car. And at least in this case, we're getting a better car at forty percent off, because the state's taking care of that, and the payment's not going to be anymore. I mean, as a taxpayer, that's great. I love that. Get me that deal any day. You know, sign me up. You know, as a resident, I want schools, you know, people ask, well, how are the schools? You know, as a minimum, we should be able to say, yeah, you know, climate control, that'd be nice, right? And so we are being proactive about that. I love that. And I hope the rest of the town will get behind, you know, get behind this and get behind all of us, because I, you know, with everything that's happening, let's be honest, I don't know, you know, if that forty percent will be there next time if this doesn't go through. I don't want to be on the hook for that. To me, that's not smart. Let's be smart. Let's be proactive. This, to me, is smart. So I hope that the town will join me in voting for questions one and questions number two. Let's do it for the town. Let's do it for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, can I please have a motion to close this public portion of the meeting? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. Ms. James, do you do the honors of number fifteen?
Happily, madam president. Whereas Section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two-thirty-one Public Law nineteen-seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this plays out the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the hereinafter specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: personnel matters and legal matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Can we please have a motion to go into closed session? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? We may go into closed session.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, can I please have a motion to close this public portion of the meeting? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? This session is closed.
Thank you. Ms. James, do you do the honors of number fifteen?
Happily, madam president. Whereas Section eight of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter two-thirty-one Public Law nineteen-seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas this plays out the opinion that such circumstances presented exist, now therefore be it resolved by the North Brunswick Township Board of Education that the public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the hereinafter specified subject matters. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows: personnel matters and legal matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Thank you. Can we please have a motion to go into closed session? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? We may go into closed session.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, can I please have a motion to close this public portion of the meeting? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
We may go into closed session. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, can I please have a motion to close this public portion of the meeting? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone opposed?
We may go into closed session. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, can I please have a motion to close this public portion of the meeting?
Yes, yes.
Okay. At this time, we will open up our meeting. Can we please have a motion to return?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are in open session.
Thank you. At this time, we have two items to take action on.
Dr. Patel?
Sure.
Motion number one.
So move to approve the termination of employee 9026 effective March 5, 2025.
Second.
So I'm going to take roll call on this one, please. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legory?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Wen?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. At this time, we will motion on another item. Dr. Patel?
Move to one, appoint Dr. Brian Zakowski to the position of interim superintendent of schools for the period from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. And two, approve the previously submitted employment contract with Dr. Zakowski, which has been approved by the Middlesex County Executive County Superintendent of Schools.
Second.
Again, I'm going to take roll call. Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
I abstain due to family conflict.
Thank you. Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Keefe?
Yes.
Mr. Legory?
Yes.
Dr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes.
Ms. Toth?
Yes.
And Mr. Wen?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. And at this time, we will adjourn our meeting. Can we please have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned.